Okay, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. First item on the agenda today is transfer station. We've had a few discussions in the past about six months about wait times mainly for trailers at the transfer station. A little history there, the tipping trailers share the same floor space as the packer trucks and the container trucks that haul to waste control. So they're all trying to share the same area at the same time. And 20 years ago, that worked out just fine because there was not so much volume. And now with extra volume from just them and from the citizens trying to dump there, it's becoming a issue of timing and how much time people spend in line. So we've been getting some numbers back from waste control of wait times and certain times of the day is better than certain times of days. There's like two to three hour waits for people to get through their trailers, which we believe is probably unacceptable. We know it's unacceptable. It's been meeting with waste control, try to give them options, try to figure out the best routes. You know, their concern is that their floor is very full. At the end of the day, if they can get more trailers, go to the landfill late in the day to give them more space in the morning to work with the trailers, you know, a few months back, probably about a half a year back, we went to the seven thirty to nine thirty for tip trailers, only commercial tip trailers. And we didn't hear any complaints for quite a while. I think we jinxed ourselves in one of these meetings and said it was going good. In the last month or so, it's reared back up again. So we met with waste control last week again on this topic. And they're going to try a program with just a few vendors to start with, the reservation system. With a few of the commercial accounts to see if that works. So a few people that have called us in the past, we've reached out to, and so has waste control in the last couple of days to see if they like to work on a reservation system. But we also talked about a camera system, a live camera system that they're able to look at people alive feed on the queue to be able to see how many people are in line, possibly before someone drives down there with their trailer. A lot of this will get alleviated maybe in a few years down the road when they add another transfer station. We had those initial conversations last week, but getting another transfer station permitted and built will take a few years. So that's not a short term fix for us. So we're trying to figure out a few bugs, work those out and to try to make it so it's a little less wait time for these citizens. So.
Just so I can get a flavor, I mean, I, I run there when I get so much garbage and I do it, is everybody use that same entrance? Or they all come through that, that same one, the public and, and them, huh?
Oh, the, the packer trucks and container trucks that are like picking up from curbside, those do come in at a separate entrance, but they use the same Florida tip.
Oh, so it's, they all, they all run through that inside that building.
Correct, that one building, yeah. There's conveyor belt if you just want to back up and hand toss. If you're in a trailer though, and you don't want to take it out by hand, you'll have to go further past. And then that's where you're sharing the same space with everybody from waste control.
And that's not a huge space. They have that guy in the machine over there.
No. So define for me, what's a packer truck? That's what goes down my alley?
Exactly right. Yep. They go, they go to exactly the same spot as a tipping trailer that you or I would take or J H Kelly or whoever.
I can see the issue. It's not a big space.
It's not. And you have to be, if, if they wanted to add a new space to tip, it's a, quite a permit process to do that. So it's not like, oh, let's build another pole barn or building and tip there. It's not that easy. So that's why I'm going to figure out scheduling wise, and that's, we're still trying to, I guess, juggle that to get the right combination. But no, not saying the reservation system is going to work great. That's why they just want to try a few trucks to say, hey, we're going to have you come in like at 10 or 10:15 and we'll make sure that you get through. But there's so many that are not just commercial accounts, that are just residential that will have their own tipping trailer that wants to go there.
Worth a try.
It is, yeah. We're trying everything. It's not our operation, but it's certainly our contract, the county's contract with the transfer station.
When I first got the complaint, I think we looked through that and they do have a time where they, they say, I think, isn't it like 15 minutes or something they, they put in the contract?
On average.
I don't, I don't know how we enforce anything like that, but I know there is.
Yeah, it's in the contract.
There is some wordage.
There is some wording in the contract.
Yeah, it's, it's an on average time of 15 minutes from scale to start tipping. But when we look at the volume of vehicles that go through the small amount of tip trailers versus the people are manually tossing it in, that's where you see that scale of difference at.
Yeah.
And another way to maybe alleviate is this fall where we look at rates again. We still get the same, about the same amount of out of county vehicles coming to that location. So maybe we raise it the out of county rates again to keep some of those citizens from outside of Calhous County. They stay in their county. We still got a lot of trailers from Clark County coming here. The rates are fairly equal now with our out of county rate compared to Clark County's in county rate, but our wait times are still less than what they're doing at Clark County.
I don't want to open up a can of worms. I know we talked about this before and I, I know it was really not feasible, but I'm trying to remember why. Haven't anybody come direct?
Yeah, we, we've had a few of those conversations. We're not really set up that way, but we've had internal conversations the last few weeks of as, is, is there a chance for that? You know, we're, we're set up for the, for big trucks and the tippers for big trucks. We'd have to set up a completely separate area for commercial haulers or commercial tip trailers. Maybe not residential, but maybe commercial. It's just a matter of our footprint, you know, a lot, a lot of landfills on the east side do that. It's not uncommon, but they also are allowed to have a lot more acreage open. So in the winter time, when we shrink down to a small footprint, we're really on top of each other. And then you're going to add more just regular tip trailers into that mix. It's, it'll be challenging, but but certainly a possibility to look more to maybe just for summer construction season only. So.
Well, based on the history, for what I'm hearing, this is all of the tip trailers that have developed over the last two years, that, that climbing number.
Yes.
Do you foresee it getting better? Cause I, it sounds to me like we're in trouble.
Yeah, I don't see it getting better. I don't see the numbers decreasing. Yeah. During COVID, it sounded like during, after COVID time, people, during COVID, people, a lot of people got trailers. That's about the timeframe that we just got more and more trailers, tip trailers going to the transfer station. I don't see that number declining and their footprint's not getting any bigger. So this, this will be an issue for a while till we figure out a, a better plan. And that's, we, we thought we had a better plan six months ago, but apparently it, it wasn't a better plan. But we keep going back to the drawing board. We've met with waste control twice in the last three weeks on this topic. So it's, it's not going away. We know that. And we try to communicate that with the people who call us and keep, keep them up to date. We're, we're working on it, but it's not an easy solution at this point. But there, there is a solution. We just got to find it.
Unfortunately for Public Works, it's really a waste control issue, but we take the heat for it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Start running a second shift.
Well, yeah, extend, extend hours there. I don't know. There, there, we have permitted hours at the landfill. I'm sure they have permitted hours also at the transfer station.
I would suspect so. I'm not sure on that though.
Somewhere, there's got to be a solution. I got my first, first call, I guess my, my first call yesterday.
Yeah. From a residential or commercial?
Residential.
A tipping trailer?
Yeah.
Okay. You can always pass that information on to us too, and we can, we can get them in the loop. We have a list of people we call when we come up with some ideas. So I'm bouncing that off them also.
Yeah, he said he got there the day before yesterday, got there and then sat in line for a while, I guess. I don't know how long. And then the kid who was managing the gate, basically, came and told him it'd be at least an hour and a half wait. And he didn't have an hour and a half, so he went home. And it came back. And he came back yesterday at nine o'clock in the morning, whatever the time was that they were supposed to, tip trailers were supposed to go. And he got there and got told it was going to be a couple of hours. And so he turned around, went home and called me, so.
We'll try to fix it.
Yeah, his question was, is do you understand why people are dumping in the woods now? I said, okay, I understand what you're telling me, but no, that's not where I want you to take your garbage.
Yeah, we had ideas also, maybe the Toodle Dropbox, you know, if we had, you know, they're only open on Wednesdays and Fridays. They're not really set up to take trailers there at Toodle. But is there a way, but it's supposed to be a covered area at that point, and that's not covered up there. So there's some logistical stuff, but there has, there is a solution. We just need to uncover it this.
Sounds like whatever solution you come up with, Department of Ecology gets involved or somebody gets involved?
There'll be permitting involved, none of it, yeah.
Yeah.
I love this.
Naturally.
Yeah.
But we'd rather take the heat than you guys. If you get those calls and we'll address them also.
Here, Mike said he'd take the butt shoe and here's his number.
We're just on a merry-go-round.
Yeah.
All right. You guys ready to move on to ARPA updates? That's probably going to be Savannah and Sean.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioner Savannah Clement, Public Services. Every time. I was just wanting to kind of give a couple miscellaneous ARPA updates. These aren't road ARPA construction projects. They're the meter replacement project that the board had approved a few months back. And we are about 25% complete on the install of those new meters. 25%. We started with Ryderwood, which is our highest concentration of rate pairs. And so overall, the project's 25% complete. I think we're about half complete in Ryderwood. So that'll be a benefit to those customers. We've received some really good feedback from them. They want a better way of doing it. And then they also are eager to use the portal feature, which is a software implementation, so they can go and check their usage as well. So that's something we do not have currently. And so they'll be able to see if they have a leak or, you know, if there's some issues ahead of time, which was part of the intent of this project. So just wanted to give an update on that. I don't really have a ton more. We're going to be getting that software at the end of August. Any questions on the meter project? The other one that's kind of hung out for a while due to just weather and timing is our tennis basketball courts resurfacing, restriping. That'll be finished at the end of the summer. So I think August was the date I was given from Alyssa and Mike, because they're going to finalize the striping and then it'll be good to go and have brand new tennis courts there. So that was it on that one as well. Any questions on either one of those?
Can I back up to meter real quick? And this is nothing about this project, but it I have a grandson that lives up off Waters Road.
Okay.
And their development out there, it's a, they have like, I don't know how many wells and they all have their own stuff and they pay their own stuff. And he was telling me they're running into some issues and I'm going, oh man, you need to fix that. I don't want the county to.
Yeah, Waters Road has their own, yes, shared well water system.
Right.
True. And I know they're struggling and this is random.
They're struggling a little bit and so.
They're struggling.
Because I know where that goes.
Yeah, I know that they had to raise their rates because they don't have the capital reserves to pay for all of the, I thought. The person I know is a treasurer and she was sharing that with me actually a few weeks ago, and I thought the same exact thing. I was like, please get it together.
He was telling me the rates and I said, well, you'd be more expensive at the county, so you probably pay more and try to get that fixed. If you need a backhoe, I'll come and help you, but.
I said the same thing. Tell them what their water bill could cost if they can't get this together. It's much more than 50 bucks a month or whatever.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's the extent of their problems? What are they facing?
I, it was really high level. She was telling, because she's a treasurer, so it was from that perspective, that they essentially don't have enough capital reserves to pay for all the maintenance because.
Aging lines and.
Yeah, and they hadn't collected enough in the past 20 years or so. They weren't, they hadn't prepared well enough. And so now they're trying to play catch up and it's been problematic.
How big of a system is it?
I don't know. I haven't, I do not know.
How many are on there? But I think if I bring it up, you can point out, because there's probably quite a few loads around the county and and as the age, the people don't have the money. We end up with them and it's kind of a struggle.
It is. And I know there's another big one. I don't know if I want to say it out loud and like jinx us. Davis Terrace, you know, One and Kelso is another one. It's an aging system and that's another one that's on our watch list. So. Well, maybe they'll have another 20 more years then to go. So anyways.
Anyway, that was off topic.
Did you want to talk about any other ARPA projects? Because Susan has a lot of the roads infrastructure projects and some of the other direct qualification ones. I don't know if you would like to give a brief update?
How many tennis and basketball courts do we have to do?
Just at Riverside or in.
Is it just Riverside?
I believe it's just Riverside. And then we only have one.
So I can give you a quick rundown of the rest of the water sewer ARPA projects. So we have the pressure zones, which is on Tower Road and Juanito. So that project, all of the water main work is done. This week, they started working on the pump station installation. So it came in earlier than anticipated. So we're looking at a end of September completion. So we'll have one wrapped up. The Toodle wastewater treatment plant upgrades, they are onsite. They just mobilized onto site on the 14th. So earlier this week, because they had long lead items, so all their procurements complete, they're out on the site working and we anticipate work November completion. So those are the two we have up under construction, the Camelot loss replacement. I have the 100% plans on my desk. We're going to review them, go through them, find anything that's odd in them and make sure to try to minimize potential change orders. And we are hoping to go out to bid the end of August.
Camelot's one we ended up taking over, right?
Yes, that's one from the Mount St. Helens. We ended up taking over that system. We have Ryderwood emergency water. We are, I just received an email today about, we're getting really close on the property. So I'm hoping by the end of this month, first week of August, to be bringing you guys the paperwork to sign on that. And then we'll finalize those plans and go out to bid October, November. And then once we have all of that information, we'll have a good idea of what dollars we have left. And we're working on scaling Shadow Mountain down to meet what the dollars we have. So we're looking at a January bid on that project. So because it's a lot, and Shadow Mountain will have some lead time items, and so we'll be working on that next summer. So those are the water sewer projects.
Ryderwood will move in hopes that this will be the last summer and they have to worry about their water.
That's the hopes, because if we get this, once we get this property settled, we can go out to bid, they can do the procurement. It's very little groundwork. So they should be able, as soon as it's bid, buy their tank and get it out there. Because there's some minor piping work, but it's predominantly above groundwork, which is good.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item I have, and I wanted to continue to kind of keep this on here to discuss with the board, is the RCO grant that we were, we're not, we haven't entered into a grant agreement yet with RCO. Because of course, we need to secure funding prior to doing that. And so talking with Sean late last week and then also trying to touch base with Kathy, I have not yet been able to meet with her. She's just getting back after being gone unexpectedly. But Sean gave me some good news about the possibility of the potential increase of the dredge spoils. What do we call it? Mining from Cook Ferry. We're looking at an increase in that more than we expected, just for some, from some recent big projects like the Port of Longview project. So we're actually thinking we'll have, we'll get more than we anticipated, which was just a change from last week. And then also looking at some other funding sources from Kathy and her team.
So just keeping on there. We did talk about that here because Woodland, well, it wasn't Woodland, but Rotary of Woodland was in on their Scott Park. And I think we, the gist is if we can find something, and I think there's rural development, that we can help with that, but we should be able to out of that. Fun, can't we? County can take rural development if need be on some of that.
As long as it meets, yeah, meets the criteria.
I'll take whatever you want to give.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think there should be enough, it goes below where Kathy likes to keep it, but she did do some research and other counties have been notified in the past that they're no longer rural, but they're still getting the funding for those years.
Okay.
For those years. So it sounds like we should still be, should still be fine. So I think that's a possibility. I don't, I don't want to put words in Kathy's mouth, but I know we had some conversation on that a little bit.
Yeah, I believe they got some confirmation on that.
Well, that's great news. Thank you. I hadn't had, like I said, I hadn't had a chance to talk to her. Okay, so I guess once we get a more concrete funding source from Kathy and maybe its rural development funds, but I will be bringing that to the board for approval hopefully very soon. So. I also, my next item, unless there's any other questions on RCO. And the facilities capital, we had a few weeks ago, Sean and I brought the board, you know, the five-year plan. We had projected it out to six years to give the board an idea of what our capital fund would look like if we move forward with all the projected projects specifically on juvenile, because that is after the Hall of Justice, the largest monetary investment we'll be making on capital maintenance there. And the board at that time directed us to meet with juvenile staff and we did last week. And we've just been gathering information and doing some kind of investigative work on how many agencies we partner with, how many partner with us, what other comparable counties look like. And so we're still kind of working those out, but we do kind of have a good idea of what we would need. You know, if we were to do different scenarios with that building and with that department. And so we can come back or we can do another meeting or have a conversation, kind of just looking for a little bit of direction on what else would you like us to provide after this information seeking? Is it a presentation? Do you, you know, would the board like to kind of just meet and discuss? Do you want to do tours?
Here's what I'd say on that. And I'm catching Commissioner Farrell cold because I haven't had a chance to sit down and chat with the other two, but I've been doing a little, little work on, on options and how that process would work. So I'd like to have some time to spend and sit with them and make sure we're all on the same page. Then we would probably have a better answer for you.
Right. Completely agree. And so what I can do to maybe help facilitate that us as a group, we can just put together some high level information points and get them to you guys for discussion. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd be willing to do a tour, just walk through it.
Perfect. Yeah, we can do that. Okay. Have you been there yet before?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Yeah. Have you been?
Don't bring your knife.
Yeah. Yeah, don't stash anything and. Okay, we'll do that. Anything else on the juvenile? Okay. All right. So the HOJ HVAC project update, again, just trying to keep this here weekly to address any questions, concerns from the board, give you guys an update as far as where we're at in the process. You know, the biggest challenge with this project, we've said all along, is going to be the planning and coordination. And so we continue to do that. I have meetings daily and I know Kelly's involved in a lot of those, as I've said before. And so we're just working out some of the coordination pieces. IT staff, both Mac and Mike have been super helpful and also Jordan in attending almost every meeting we have, and then also providing some really great tools for coordination. So they're actually going to be building us a SharePoint site to share communication notes, agenda topics, outstanding items, questions and concerns. So that we're not waiting for those weekly meetings for things to get brought up. And so I'm excited for that. So that's kind of just an update. We're still slated to do the soft construction. I say soft construction, I made that up, but it's, it's really just they'll be mobilizing onsite the week of August 18th. So then heavier construction will start and the moving will start mid-September. So once we get the moving schedule finalized, it pretty much is, but we're working out kinks, I can give that to the board, or I can just add you guys on, you know, the SharePoint. You can have access to the information whenever. If that's something you guys have an interest in.
Me personally, I'd like the SharePoint. If I get a call on it, then I can just pull up and say, well, here's where we're at on that.
Yeah, yes, please. How are we coming with getting the meeting room set up across the hall?
Yeah, I think that's going, I think it's going well. We just actually just asked for Kathy's approval for issuing a PO for that AV equipment that we'll need. Really, the only thing that we have left in there is building that stage. And because that's all in-house, I'm not, not super stressed about it because I know the team's aware of it and they know what they need to do. So that's really the large outstanding item, if, you know, in that room for district court.
So audio visual, you're set to go?
So the audio visual, we're doing third party. They're doing that pop-up court system where we can really hold court anywhere we need to, which is great. And then they're also going to, they already ran all the data lines in there. So Jason just gave me confirmation earlier. So data is ready to go. Like I said, AV will be ordered and installed prior to any court dates. We're just waiting on that elevated stage. And security will not be an added cost. I think that was one of the big scary items at first, but they're actually going to be transferring one of their two security guards from Northwest Enforcement. Since there's no court at the hall, they'll be over here and we'll also have a sheriff's deputy here. So. Yeah, so you know, there has been speed bumps, but so far I feel pretty good about the plan in place and moving forward. So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep. All right. And then we just have Sean and Susan to give some budget.
August 18th start date?
Yep, soft, soft construction. Yes, mobilization sounds better.
So a few weeks ago, June 30th, I believe, we were in to do our budget and we said we'd come back with a more of a in-depth dive on where we are with our construction and where we expect to be at the end of the year and what our preliminary plan is for 2026. So what Savannah just handed you is the cash flow estimate on top for 2026. Well, let me back up. So originally we had, I'm flipping pages because I was not very organized here. So originally for 2025, we had a much larger construction program planned and as usual, I overpromised because I am an optimistic county engineer and I always think that the stars are going to align and every project that I want to get done is going to get built. So in 2025, we have gone out to bid and started the following projects. South Cloverdale and the South Cloverdale Comfort Road project, we originally were estimating to have that almost $7 million project completed in 2025. But because of our late start due to whatever that last change was, we are now going to do part of our work in 2025 and have a winter suspension so that we can do our culverts. So the dollars amounts are being split between the two years. Eric Creek Culvert was a rollover. That is finished. We're just finalizing the last change order. The countywide guarded rail and delineators are bid and they should be starting soon. Garlock Road Box Culvert is underway with a scheduled October completion. An Italian Creek Culvert is also underway with a September completion. Now, we have a few projects. We have two projects left that are going at road projects left. Let me make sure, make that clear. Two road projects left that were on our original schedule that are going to go out to bid this year. That's the Allender Road Bridge Replacement. That plan set is also on my desk. 100% plans and specifications for a final review before we send them to Wash. Wash Stop for their review and approval. Part of our, for the past month and a half, we have been working with the state to get additional money for that, which was just approved a few weeks ago, which is now being updated into the state's STIP. So once that's in the STIP, you will see the, all those local agency agreements that we make with the state to obligate construction funding. So once that dollar amount is obligated, we're planning on going out to bid late September, early October. A good amount of that work is out of the water, so they will start, but the costs that we're spending this year, we're spending more like $300,000 versus close to 1.8 million. So you'll, we'll see those expenses in 2026 versus 2025. And then the other project that's going out this year is as part of our ADA plan, we're working on an intersection per year, and that project is at 30% design, and we'll be sending that out in August. They're, they're quick turnaround projects. So those were the projects that are still going to get bid this year. And then we have a list of projects that are delayed until 2026 for various reasons. Dyke Road Reconstruction, Rock Creek Culvert, which is the Tower Road project, the Pleasant Hill Culvert, a small repair to Allender Road, head wall repair on South Toodle Road, West Side Highway Slide and Butte Hill Slide. So all of those will be moved to next year. So what we wanted to do, Sean created beautiful cash flow dollars, is to give you guys an idea of where we really think we are going to be at the end of 2025 and what moving those projects back to 2026 will show you with three different scenarios. Susan's half glass-full scenario, or glass-full scenario. What I think is probably more likely, and then our worst-case scenario where some of those projects that, something's going to come up, a worst-case scenario, so that you can see what would happen with our ending fund balance. So based on what the projections I came up with on this year's construction, Sean has estimated out that our beginning cash at the beginning of 2026 will be 16.2 million dollars. If Susan spends all of her money, like she would like to do, at the end of 2026, we'd be, have a ending cash balance of 9.2. If some of our projects drop off, we're at a 10.2 million dollar case, and that, that's still a half, a glass more than half-full scenario. And then the worst-case scenario, a lot of the big projects drop off and we'd have 17.5 million dollars left in our cash balance. And if you look at the second street sheet, the projects highlighted in blue down towards the bottom are the projects that we're talking about. There's some hesitation in the back of my mind that might hold them up. So we've still got Dyke Road reconstruction, we're working on that 408, they requested more information, we've sent it back, so we're still waiting on that. And that, I don't have much confidence working on the 408 process, but that'll be over two years next summer that we've submitted for that permit. There always could be some quirk in that Tower Road project. Pleasant Hill Bridge, that's a FEMA project, and so everything's going through FEMA. We are originally planning on bidding that September, October this year. We are still right around the 50%, so it's just creeping along, the correspondence with FEMA getting that project going. And then we have Rose Valley Road Culverts, that's a, that's at milepost 7.72. That is also an emergency project that has been a little slower to evolve than we liked. And then Allender Road Culvert, which is different than Allender Road Bridge, that has fish dollars in it that we are just getting under contract for the construction of. So something quirky permitting or something might, or property might come up in that. So.
And so popping in, we don't see a huge difference between the optimal, Susan's hundred percent, and then the less likely. And that's because those projects that are falling off there, Susan's team has got those funded 87% to 90% grant-funded. So they've done a really good job on that side on getting the cash flow there. Now, on the worst-case scenario, we're seeing a lot of projects that have a lot of local dollars attached to them, and so we're seeing those bump up because of that.
Couple, couple questions, and I don't even know, I don't know if you'll have the answers on these grant funds, on the ones we're, we're working on. They come to us from the state, who gets them from the feds, right?
For, yes, or some of them.
When you get that, is it money already sitting in the state? Or is it money that they still need to get from the Fed? Do you know that?
So they, the Fed says you have this pot of money, so I believe they have it.
So the Fed still has it. So in a worst-case scenario, if Fed says we're not sending Washington State any more money, these ones we've started, that money, grant money from the state, isn't actually at the state, to our knowledge?
To my knowledge, no. I could be wrong, but I don't know how they're, they run that. Of these projects, so the Dyke Road Reconstruction, that is state money, so there's no federal money in that one, so that money won't disappear. South Cloverdale, because it's obligated, they have that money. And that Allender Road Bridge, when we talked to them, they stated as long as we were obligated by that September 30 date, they have that money. They're looking at more money that's not obligated in the current federal fiscal year potentially being an issue, is the feeling that I've heard from Wash Stop.
Okay. So if these ones we, we got going, if worst-case, and for some reason, we didn't get some funds from the feds, are we flush enough to complete those, or are we, is it, it stops?
They would likely stop or be delayed until we could build our...
Our reserves.
Yeah, figure out what else, or decide this one's more important than that one, so we're going to do this project.
Gotcha.
And I don't know in your scenario, because let's take Rose Valley Road Culvert, so that has federal money for it. We've used federal money for design. If they take the money away from the construction, if for some reason we decided we wanted, didn't want to build it when we'd spent federal funds on it, they'd ask for them back whatever they had given us. But if they decide that they're not giving us the construction funding, I have no idea if they're going to ask for the design funds that we spent back.
Yeah.
And that, that's a scenario of something we can ask, if we get there.
Send us a bill. And I'm not saying, I don't want to alarm people, I'm not saying any of these happen, I'm just trying to get wrapped in my head if, if a worst-case, how much would we be able to get done, or does things just stop? I, I, things obviously would slow down a lot as far as getting things completed, no matter how optimistic you are.
That is true. And the one that I see that the money is most likely to go away from unfortunately is that Pleasant Hill Bridge Culvert, whatever we're going to call it, that FEMA money. FEMA money concerns.
The only saving grace is it's not a busy road and it doesn't seem to be a problem.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
If it was like Ocean Beach Highway or something, I'd be really concerned, but yeah.
So obviously, we're still working on the six-year plan. I will have a preliminary to Sean next week. That includes the 2027 projections in there. I've got 26 pretty much dialed in, going to be working on 27 tomorrow and Monday so I can get that to Sean. And we'll be bringing that and making changes as we go, but we'll be bringing that forward and posting it up on our website, so if the public's interested, they can review it and get comments in before we do the hearing in December. So I'd, I'd like public input because it'd be good to hear what other people think besides a bunch of engineers in the office.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome. Did we have anything else, guys?
Anything miscellaneous for us?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we have, we have an executive session request? Or what did? So Doug's is, do you remember what it was, the title on it? Do you remember, David? Potential litigation, probably? And I think he said in his email, five, five minutes. And then Shelley's is? In 15, 15 probably? Okay, we was turned to executive session, two of them under potential litigation, one five minutes, one 15.
Thank you.